It's 5:30, so we'll call to order this meeting for Monday, June 15th. Carl, can I get a roll call, please?
Council members, please announce your attendance by saying present. Councilmember Remley?
Aye, here, present.
Ronane?
Present.
Lunsman?
Present.
Reif?
Present.
Johnson?
Present.
Bunsoness?
Present.
Olson?
Present.
Rux?
Present.
Mayor Shawman?
Present.
Please hand me the pledge of allegiance.
Let put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order of business will be to approve the two meetings last week's minutes for June 5th and June 8th. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
Moved.
Second?
Got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Olson. Carl, please roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. We've got an open forum today for the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce to present the marketing report update, as well as announce the new city flag design winner. So Lisa, is that you?
That's Harley, yep.
Sounds good. Make sure the little green light is on the microphones so we can all hear you. You can do whatever you wish, I guess.
And I won't touch anything.
Okay. Suit yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. So I'm just here to give a little recap about what we did the first half of this year, 2020, as far as the city promotion fund. And if you recall, when I was here in December, I advised that we were going to roll into 2020 funds what would have been used last year for the new community brand. And that amount was about $58,000. And so we have, right, this year, we had about $168,000 to work with to promote the city. So we didn't do a whole lot the first part of the year, just because we were really holding off until the new brand, so that we could really get it rolled out and do things right with signage and marketing and everything. So we did stop radio for a while in March and April, and we kind of banked those ads for after the community brand rollout. So for the last few weeks, we've been running pretty hard on all the Aberdeen radio stations, as well as in the Mole Bridge and Jamestown markets, and we will be adding Watertown market soon as well. We just had an opportunity today to, I guess, there's going to be some Smithy's baseball on Hub City Radio this summer, and I believe that's the first time that's ever happened. So I thought it was important to help promote that as well, since there's, for one, it's just a great cause to support and to get, you know, just kind of get more Aberdeen marketing out there, but also because of the fact that, you know, we really want to help keep this, something like this, which is a really good thing going. And then, of course, as you know, we worked with Dakota Broadcasting on the new jingle. As far as TV goes, we did, started some 30-second ads on KSFY last month, and we will be doing some Twins game on Midco when they resume their season, when they begin their season. And we're also doing some digital banner ads on KSFY, as well as within Midco Internet Services, which link to aberdeenSD.com. And we're also running on the, Midco now has connected TV, so we're running on that as well. We had a couple, as far as print, we had a couple ads in the American News in May. We're running some of the James, excuse me, Jamestown Sun this summer. We also are part of the summer fun insert in the Bowdoin and Eureka newspapers. And then we will also have a presence in each of the upcoming Aberdeen magazines for the remainder of the year. Signs and banners, we've got billboard up in Aberdeen, and we're running on the digital in Jamestown right now. We're going to be putting up a new dasher board in the ice arena, and we'll also have an ice logo for the Wings games this year. We purchased a new sale sign, as well as a large backdrop and a couple of small side murals. So that's used for many things we do with, when we have more city-related events, so like the candidate forums and the, you use them for cracker barrels, cracker barrels, yeah. If the other community organizations want to use them, they're welcome to borrow them at any time. You know, they belong to the community, so we're hoping people will use them. So in addition to that, we bought a new table cover and some two-pocket folders for sending out the relocation packets and some stickers with a new logo on it, and just some similar things like that. And so for the rest of the year, we'll be looking at doing some promotional items, like pens and notepads and things like that, that we can start getting out into the community. We also have money still set aside for the new website redesign, which we have not done yet, but hoping to get that going yet this year. So, are there any questions at all? Okay, thank you very much. And I'll have Tiffany come up, and I'll kind of, you know, just kind of maybe hover around a little bit, but she's going to talk to you about the flag. That stuff we do. It's hard to not touch this. Long time no see.
Welcome back.
Thanks, guys.
Tell us about the flag.
So we, as part of our proposal to the chamber, the CVB in the downtown was a flag. I have seen a lot of flags throughout my times of traveling throughout the United States in different community states, et cetera, and my team has participated in making several different flags. The city of Topeka, where I'm from, recently had rebranded and done a flag, and I loved the process that they did. And then I noticed that Sioux Falls also went through the process, and they unveiled their flag in 2018, and they've done some incredible things with it, just as far as marketing and allowing people to use it. So I know there's been some talk about Aberdeen already having a flag, and actually, I see it over there in the corner. And just because you redesign a flag does not mean that a former flag did not exist. It's just a retired official flag. And I don't know that that was ever adopted as the official flag of Aberdeen, but I believe the Chamber of Commerce and the downtown and CVB plan to ask the city council to formally recognize this new flag as the flag of Aberdeen. So we want to show you guys the winner. We did participate. We took some notes from other contests that existed and tried to do that in Aberdeen and include the community. So we did use the city color palette when we picked the colors. We also used the South Dakota color palette. Then we asked the community to vote on words that they felt that represented Aberdeen, and then we took those words, put them with colors, and created a flag. Again, we did use the world's largest flag organization's rules when creating the flag. We didn't pay anybody to do the study. It's just out there. Any of you can use the rules. So that's what we did, and I don't know if...
Carl's pulling up the one that we...
Oh, perfect. And then the, and then we, yeah, so we released these for vote. So the three that were voted on are those three. Option A, or option one, two, and three. And they're all supposed to in some way represent hubs and the Hub City. And then the winner of the flag contest, are you guys so excited? Is option one. So option one is the winner, and there's a lot of symbolism within option one that I think is important to acknowledge. So in option one, the blue color you see, the lighter blue, is the actual color of the South Dakota flag currently. The cross that you see in it is pulled from the Scotland flag, which Aberdeen was named after. And then, you know, the, we even went further into talking about the railroads crossing with the two main highways in Aberdeen with the points on the star. And then the middle piece is actually the same sun-type flower in the South Dakota flag as well. So there is a lot of symbolism in there. That's just us showing you the Scotland flag versus the new Aberdeen flag. So there's a lot of symbolism involved in it. The colors are very symbolic, too, the current Aberdeen palette and the South Dakota palette. So, yeah, it's just exciting stuff. And there's another slide, too, where we showed, I don't know if you have it, all the different ways that the flag can be used, kind of similar to what Sioux Falls does right now. And other cities. I just use Sioux Falls because obviously they're in South Dakota. Hoping it will come up, but... So that's an example of what a lot of other cities do with their flag, to use that symbolic branding in different forms and putting those on shirts and hats and whatever your heart desires to have the flag in. But you're able to show your support for a city without having to have just the name or a logo. So that's what we'd love to see, hopefully. And I know that the new, whatever creative name Brody calls his store, that's going in the Mount Hills Plaza, mark it on the something, mark it on the plaza. I know that Brody's really excited about having a new opportunity to create. Brody and Carly both are thrilled to use a flag like this to create merchandise. So, are there any questions?
So when do you think you'll be coming to the council to retire the existing Aberdeen flag?
So from my understanding, and I know that Gail and Lisa have worked really hard to understand if it was ever actually adopted by the city council, and we haven't found that information, and it hasn't been provided to them, from my understanding. So it's not actually technically ever been introduced as the official flag of Aberdeen.
Do we know when it was presented as the flag of Aberdeen?
From our understanding, sometime in the 80s, which we haven't been able to get an exact date on it, the Exchange Club had a contest, and then it was done that way, and it just kind of... And so that's the only thing we've been able to find. And it's a fine flag. So, you know, and it will still remain. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, and the other thing, we just wanted to kind of show different cities when they put a seal on a flag or a logo on a flag versus their actual city flag. So again, cities can have multiple representations of their city that isn't a real flag versus what their actual flag is. So again, if we chose to fly that flag, or if we put the city of Aberdeen's logo on a flag, we could do that still. It's just not the official flag, which you can see here, many cities do. Just like Topeka, I always laugh when they have their seal on their flag versus their really cool, you know, graphic flag. So there's a, there's a lot of cities who do this, where they have a flag that some people will fly that is not their actual flag versus what is theirs.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. And I don't know when they plan to ask you to do that, but I would guess sometime soon.
Try to do a little more research, maybe work with Ron, see if it was ever officially adopted.
I could sanitize it. No other buttons, right?
Thank you, Tiffany.
We just wanted to chat with you a little bit about the seal, too, because we...
Yeah, because one of the questions that's come up, and I think you can, well, you can see the seal on your chairs here, right? We believe that is an official Aberdeen seal, and I'm not, we're not really sure. Maybe some of you know better, if that was officially adopted by the city of Aberdeen as well. So, because there is a lot of confusion between a seal and a flag. And like even the state of South Dakota, that is a seal on that flag. So that's something, too, I think, that we'll look into. And I know, I know that Ron has trademarked, has trademarked that seal. So we're not trying to replace a seal at all. I think you can see here some seals versus flags. So I think we just need to clarify that, you know, that's probably the official seal, and then we would move forward with a new adoption for a flag. Different rules apply to both.
Question is, does Aberdeen have the official seal?
If it isn't, you use it. We probably should make it the official seal. But even looking today, you know, it's red and black here, and it's blue and yellow on the screen. So it is kind of confusing to know even what the colors are, but just might be a good process. Just make sure we have everything trademarked and make sure everybody's using everything properly as well.
One thing, one thing we did find is that eight years ago, a legislator brought forth a bill in the South Dakota Legislature to have a new South Dakota flag. And so we found some really interesting information about the difference between a seal and a flag and how it's explained by the artist who drew the potential new South Dakota flag or designed it. He said this, a seal is designed so that it's very complex and very detailed. So when you make a stamp on a letter, it's official, and no one will be able to duplicate it. The job of a flag is to be easily recognized from a distance and be fun and attractive. So that's kind of the two, the difference between those two, you know, just kind of in a nutshell, so.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the Dallas Chamber?
No questions. I, you know, I, I hope, you know, I don't get too excited about these things because I'm an accountant, and you could put a ten key on a flag and it wouldn't get, I mean, I just wouldn't... So, you know, I appreciate your hard work in doing this, and, and hopefully, you know, it grows on everyone. I know it grows, it's already been received with a lot of praise, but, you know, not everyone, you know, comes to the table just excited right away. And I kind of sense that on this council, because you haven't, I haven't heard a lot of positive comments coming back to you, but I think it's just we're getting used to the change. Okay, so, but appreciate the hard work and look forward to it being successful.
Thank you for your presentation. First, we will move along to old business. We've got the possible second reading and final adoption of the ordinance proposing a comprehensive amendment to the Aberdeen Home Rule Charter. Ron, have we got any changes to this since we voted on it last week?
Mr. Mayor, I've heard nothing with requested changes or comments from the public in the last week.
Move approval.
Second?
Motion from Bunsoness and a second from Johnson. I believe it passed without objection last week. Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible second reading and final adoption of an ordinance proposing an amendment to the outdoor dining of the Aberdeen City Code. Ron, anything new with that one?
No, Mr. Mayor. I did want to point out to the council and pre-chair with the, with the public that the changes that are being proposed to the outdoor dining, those are citywide, not just necessarily downtown. There is a provision within the ordinance that identifies the downtown for purposes of allowing downtown merchants to use the jet-out area that might be near their, their property. But those changes that you're seeing to the outdoor dining, and I did clarify this with Shelley following last, last week's meeting, those changes would apply to the entire city so that that opportunity would be available to any on-sale licensee within the city.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ron. Shelley, anything to add before we take a...
I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that as well, the way it kind of came across. I just didn't know what you think was just downtown, so.
I definitely thought that personally.
Move approval.
Clarified that.
Second?
Got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Councilman Ronane. Does anyone have any questions for either Ron or Shelley while we're on the topic? Or else, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got our routine city business, consent calendar items, A and B, renewal of on- and off-sale malt beverage licenses, as well as new private security licenses. Can I get a motion to approve these consent calendar items?
Moved.
Second?
Got a motion from Bunsoness, and who is the second?
It was me.
And a second from Reif. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Move along to the new business segment of our meeting. We've got the possible first reading of ordinance amending the open burning section of the Aberdeen City Code. And Chad, I see you on the screen here. What can you tell us about your ordinance?
Thank you all. So kind of going through a lot of our prevention ordinances and just, you know, making sure that they make sense and, you know, that we have a good enforceable ordinance out there. Kind of the, the main driver, you know, there was kind of some inconsistencies with our, with the interpretation of our fire code. The fire code does not specify distances from property lines. It is specific to adjoining structures. I felt like that was really misleading to people because we were allowing them to build a fire pit, and then if their neighbor builds a garage, in essence, the fire pit would need to be moved then. So I didn't care for that. I did work with Sioux Falls and Rapid City and kind of some of the regulations that they had. Worked with Ron and just kind of tried to rework what we have. We did, previously, we had 25 feet for separation distances. Some areas where we have smaller lots that could be cumbersome, we reduced that to 15 feet, which is consistent with what other communities have done. Previously, we required permits for fire pits. That's something that we didn't actively enforce, so we removed that provision as well. We still do need to get permits for large burnings, open burnings, bonfires, things of that nature. That will stay the same. Other than that, any other questions from anyone that you might have?
I'll move the ordinance.
And second?
Second?
Got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Johnson. Chad, I did see that you very specifically added animal carcasses cannot be burned. That was a major concern that we were facing.
Yeah, we added the carcasses and the, the tree stumps. I have not received a call on carcasses yet, but I was actually surprised at how many calls I get to try to burn out tree stumps, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the fire marshal while he is here? Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, Chad.
Thank you very much.
Move along to our possible first reading of the ordinance approving issuance and provisions for repayment of the refunding bond series 2020B for series 2014A issued for the remodel of City Hall. Carl, tell us all about those bonds, please.
Thank you, Mayor. During discussions with Tom Grimmond with Doherty and Company, now they're Collier International, he identified the City Hall bonds as bonds that would be eligible to be refunded later this year. Because we did ratings with Moody's earlier, he said that ratings would still work for this refunding, so it's like we've got a lot of the groundwork done. If you remember, when we did the issuance in 2014 for the City Hall bonds, interest rates were a little higher. They've dropped significantly since then, so Tom was quick to point out that we'd see some good savings on that. The one little quirk to this idea is that we have a series of bonds out there that we issued for the campground expansion back in 2010. I have to check my notes. Yes, 2010. And those have a debt service covenant within the official statement, the bond official statement. According to Tom, if we can get rid of that series of bonds, then we don't have to have a debt service reserve for this new refunding, which we currently have a debt service reserve. We'd be able to use that to pay down on the existing City Hall remodel bonds. So we save some more interest costs, basically. By paying off these campground expansion bonds early, we save money on that. And because the campground bonds are currently at about a 4% interest rate, their, their high interest rate, it would make sense to pay those off anyway. There's only four years, four and a half years left of payments on those campground bonds. We can use some existing cash balances within special sales tax. We would need to pull out about, I wrote it down, on the, about $189,000, $190,000. We would still transfer money from the campground fund, enterprise fund, to the special sales tax to repay that advance, if you will. But I think we, it'd make good fiscal sense to pay that campground bond off and then issue refund on the City Hall bonds.
Move approval.
Second?
Got a motion from Councilman Bunsoness and a second from Councilman Ronane. So what about, approximately, what do we still owe on the, on the city's renovation?
On the City Hall one? Because when we issued those bonds, we were also buying the old federal building, if you recall. So we structured those two bonds to sell at the same time. And because we wanted to accelerate payments on the old federal building, we put most of the debt service payment towards that. We had just small debt service payments principal towards the City Hall, so there's still quite a bit. It's close to 285, excuse me, $2.85 million. Dropped to zero there. $2.85 million because we were making most of the payments against the federal building. But now that debt service is paid off, so we're ramping up.
Accelerating.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Albert, Councilman Bunsoness?
How much is the debt service fund?
The debt service reserve?
The reserve fund?
The amount that we're holding in the City Hall bond fund is approximately $348,000.
So all that would go back?
So we would put that towards principal, yeah.
Good.
Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote on the possible first reading?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a resolution declaring firearms as surplus property and provides for trading on new items. Ron, are you going to tell us about that here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can. This is the more or less annual resolution for surplusing firearms. There's this involved process that the police department undertakes through its custody, property custodian, to try to return firearms, if they can be returned. And eventually, throughout the course of closing out an old case, they can identify which properties will be able to be returned, which can't. And then they, then we declare these surplus properties. Right now, on this list, there are 40 firearms this year. We recommend the council approve the resolution.
Move to approve. Second?
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson, a second from Councilman Ronane to declare the surplus and provide for them to be traded in on new items. Anyone have any questions?
Yes.
City Attorney, Councilman Olson?
Ron, could you tell me, that list seems to be quite larger than normal. Is that an indication of any increase in crime in any particular area?
Mr. Olson, what I think it's, what it's an indication of is that with the COVID kind of slowing things down at the police department, I think our custodian was able to get on top of more of these cases. But I think that's really why it is. It's not that there was an increase in guns that's been taken. It's just an increase in, in evidence that has been closed and cases that are being disposed of final.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a hearing on the transfer of retail on-sale liquor license from La Haye's Management LLC to W&amp;P of Aberdeen LLC at Buffalo Wild Wings on Sixth Avenue. Possible approval of the transfer.
Move to approve. Second?
Got a motion from Councilman Ronane and a second from Olson. Does anyone have any questions or discussion as it relates to that? It looks like it was just one guy transferring one to a different entity under his own, his own ownership. So Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsoness?
Bunsonis? Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion. Well, carry next, we've got the reappointment of Doug Farndt to the Aberdeen Parks and Recreation Board for another five year term ending June 30th, 2025. Possible approval and reappointment.
Moved.
Second.
A motion from Bunsonis and a second from Councilman Reif. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain? Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Thank you. Next, we'll move along to invitation for bids for a portable vehicle lift and support stands for the Aberdeen Ride Line. Looks like Tom, Mr. Wanty, is here to speak to us on that. Can you tell us about that invitation for bids?
Okay, basically, that is just the, I guess, all the process that we need to go through to get the approval to send this out for bids. This is for a portable lift system and, and extra support stands for in the shop. We'll be replacing a fixed lift that with some of our newer buses, no longer fit onto that lift. So these portable lifts will allow us to use on, on any size bus.
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Bunsonis. Does anyone have any questions or statements for Mr. Wanty while he's here? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to the request to purchase two pickups from the state contract listings for the possible, or for the Public Works Utility Division, possible approval to purchase an F1, F250 pickup for $32,980 and an F3 pickup for $36,104. Robin, I see you're here to join us. Robin, tell us about those pickups.
You will see that the pickups, the, the state bid is actually through Lamb Motors out of Oneida. Pearson's have agreed to furnish under their contract. And we always want to try to do that if it's possible to use a local vendor. Pearson's have agreed to do that. They will take the older pickups and surplus them once these new pickups are delivered. And they, these are a little bit heavier duty. We have found that we're getting better service out of the heavier duty. We get out of the, the half ton size that we used to obtain. So we request your approval.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Olson and a second from Councilman Johnson. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to purchase a CAT motor grader from Butler Machinery Company for the Public Works Street Division. Possible approval to make that purchase for $299,474 from the Public Works. Robin, why don't you tell us about that motor grader, please?
Okay, this is the, this is the piece of equipment that, one of the pieces of equipment, rather, that we were holding back as a, just to see where the budget was going and conversations with city manager Lander and finance officer Alberts. We do feel at this point that the funds are available to commit to the purchase. This is a piece of equipment that will replace a significantly older piece of equipment that is not really up to the task for full time usage anymore. Uh, we're still evaluating our options as far as what we need to do for long range usage. But we are leasing units like this right now and we request the ability to purchase this one at this time.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Olson and a second from Councilman Bunsonis. Carl, give me a roll call vote on that purchase, please. Thank you. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment change order for North Dakota Street Reconstruction Project, possible approval of the payment request number two, the amount of $971,278.14 and a change order number two in the amount of $8,200 to re-construction for that project. Robin, while you're here.
Okay, the project is nearing completion at this point. As, as you're aware, the north 800 feet of the northbound lane did take some, some rain damage from that heavy rain we got a couple of weeks ago. The contractor is preparing to do some remedial work on it to, to make it, to meet our specification. We have done some corrings, everything but the top eighth inch or so looks fine. And we believe it will be structurally sound and what the taxpayers are paying for. Uh, we have held back for this time. The amount of that 800 foot of paving is not included in this pay request. And we will process that at a later time after we've had a chance to evaluate all of our options. So we request payment of $971,000 and the change order of $8,200 to re-construction.
Move to approve.
Second. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Bunsonis. Carl, give me a roll call-
I would have one question if I could, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Councilman, Ronain has a question for you.
I'm curious, Robin, how are they doing on, on the schedule? Looks to me, if anything, as though they got it all poured. There can't be that much left.
No, the only thing we're really working on is tie-ins at intersections and driveways. Uh, it'll be just the, the things behind the curb, basically, that's remaining. So we still expect to be done right around the Fourth of July.
Oh, now the sign there says that it's in August. It was expected to be completed in August.
We were, we were able to start it early because school was not in session. So we wouldn't have started that project for at least three weeks later.
Okay.
If school had been in session.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much, Robin. Appreciate all the information here tonight. Next, we've got an FAA grant application.
I'm gonna take a vote.
Oh, yeah. I actually want to get that million dollars. Carl, why don't you give me that, that roll call vote? Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain? Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the FAA grant application to acquire one ecological test cart assembly, also known as the mobile cart foam test system. Rich, are you here to tell us about that?
I am here, Mayor, thank you. What this is, is through 2021, the FAA will provide funding for these ARF carts or aqueous film forming carts that are used to recover following a test. We, we're required to test these trucks twice a year and in standard practice throughout the, the world, really, is you just shoot foam for 30 seconds and, and make sure your truck is calibrated. A little backstory with this is that over the years, PFOS and PFAS, which are components that these foams are made with, leach into the ground and cause ground contamination. So therefore, the, an environmental solution is to pipe in this ARF recovery cart, this foam recovery cart to the fire truck so that you can actually flow foam without discharging it to the environment. So, um, late this afternoon, I found out that this will not be 100% funded. It will be our 5%, which the city would be obligated for 1,750 on that. So I don't know what kind of a change we need to make to this council, uh, request for council action. But, um, the, the wording is not correct on this as of late this afternoon. So I don't know if that just needs to be a journal entry or however, Mary keeps track of the minutes. But we, I really recommend moving forward with this ARF cart because after 2021, if we don't acquire this cart through AIP funding, AIP funding for this cart shuts off end of 2021. And then the city will be responsible for the full $35,000.
Move to approve with the understanding that the city would bear its 5% share. Second.
And then Carl, you recommend that we make that adjustment in the language of this?
I can put that indication in the notes. Uh, my question to Rich, is there going to be any state grant funding associated with this?
There will be, it'll, it'll be the 5%, Carl.
So it'll be a 95.5?
No, it will be 90, 5 and 5.
That's what he said, just fast.
Okay.
Is that what you said?
Thank you for clarifying.
Oh, okay. Sorry if I misunderstood.
No, you're, you're good.
So we've got a, a motion from Ronain and a second, was that you, Johnson?
It was.
And a second from Johnson to make that amendment and to approve this application. Carl, why don't you give us a roll call vote? Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunsonis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shoneman? Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got our approval for the bill list for June 15th, 2020. They have no additions or adjustments to the list that was provided in your packet.